Welcome to the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, October the 18th, 2016. At this time, I'll ask Reverend Matthew Powell, the Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church, to give the invocation, and he is a guest of Councilman Mike Bryan and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Buddy Palmer. Could you all rise, please?
I just want to say that Brother Matt's only been in Tupelo for six months, so he's already getting active in the community and getting engaged. And I just want to say that if you're looking for a church or anything, just please come and check his sermons out at First Baptist Church here in Tupelo. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryan. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we bow before you at this time, and Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to live in your world one more day. Father, I pray for the councilmen and councilwomen tonight as they conduct business. Father, I pray for our mayor. Father, for the other city officials here in this room, that, Father, you would fill their hearts and minds with wisdom, and that, Father, you would show favor on our city, and, Father, that your wisdom might rest in our hearts in all of our endeavors that we face. Father, we ask for your blessing on all that's conducted, and we pray for your well-being to be in the lives of each person here tonight. And we thank you most importantly for your son, Jesus, and it's in his name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Please place the flag, please. Attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the meeting to order and ask Council Vice President Markel Whittington to confirm or amend the agenda and agenda order.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to confirm the agenda and the agenda order as printed.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Whittington and a second by Mr. Mike Bryan. All in favor? The motion carries. Item 4, Proclamation, Recognitions, and the Reports Agenda. Item 4.1, Recognition of Boys and Girl Scouts, we have none. Item 4.2, Recognition of City Employees, we have none. Item 4.3, Public Recognitions, and Mayor, if you'll do that, we'll do the City Council after you.
Okay. At this time, it's an honor to have a special group with us for public recognition. If I could ask Mr. Allen McDaniel and everybody with the Blue Suede Cruise, if y'all will please come, come join me, and also our Director of Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Neil McCoy.
At this time, it's my honor and privilege to recognize Mr. Allen McDaniel and the Board of Directors and everyone that participates in the Blue Suede Cruise here in the city of Tupelo. This event has grown over the years and has become not just a premier event in the city of Tupelo, it's an event that brings in, how many cars?
Just short of a thousand.
Just right at a thousand of some of the most amazing cars you'll ever see, and also thousands of people. And it has become, as I said, a premier event in the city of Tupelo and something that not only helps with the quality of life here in Tupelo, but also the economic benefits of having that many people come in and spend a weekend in the city of Tupelo. But above and beyond that, for lack of a better way to say it, it's just a really cool event, a really cool thing to go and see. But this event has not only caught the local community's attention, we have a governor that I think has done a great job in placing a very significant attention or putting significant state resources behind statewide tourism and recognizing events across the state of Mississippi that are outstanding and that do provide that quality of life, that cool factor, and also the economic benefit of bringing people to town. This year, at the Mississippi Tourism Association, the Mississippi's, excuse me, the Mississippi Governor's Conference on Tourism of the Mississippi Tourism Association, the winner of the small festival event of the year for the state of Mississippi was the Tupelo Blue Suede Cruise. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much, as Dick would say over at the Everest Festival Museum. I just want to say thanks to everybody in the city that helps us, everybody from the Tupelo Convention Center and the different businesses, the different city agencies. We always had a lot of help. We've been doing this 13 years. It is labor of love for a lot of people, especially this group right here. And this is the Board of Directors, we're short one who couldn't make it, but I wanted them to be sure that they were here and to be able to share in this because it's a lot of work. Anybody that puts on a show of this can and this size knows that it takes a lot of people, a lot of hands, and a lot of hearts to get it done. And this board and the members of the North Mississippi Cruisers have all gone together and have done this, and we hope to keep on doing it just as long as we're able to do it, and as long as people will continue to come. It's, we like it, we think it's a good deal. It's a free event, and I always mention that, it's free, doesn't cost anything to come and get involved, so we'll do it again next year.
No.
All right, Public Recognitions for the City Council, what's wrong, Mr. Jennings? Okay, item 4.4, Proclamation, Recognition of Dyslexia Awareness Month. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. If I could, at this time, I ask my friend Mia and her mom, and I'm not sure who else to come join me. Let's see. We get right here. Okay. At this time, on behalf of the Council, the Administration, and the City of Tupelo, as Mayor of the City of Tupelo, it's my honor and privilege to issue the following proclamation pertaining to Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas dyslexia is the most common learning disability in the United States according to the National Institute of Health, whereas dyslexia is a specific learning disability that is neurological in origin, characterized but not limited to delay in spoken language development difficulties with concepts, sequence, time, and space, and difficulty learning to read fluently. Whereas children with dyslexia who are identified early and provided with effective scientifically-proven multisensory reading instruction by kindergarten or first grade will have significantly fewer difficulties learning to read at their grade level than those who are identified later and who do not receive multisensory education until the third grade or later. Whereas teachers and students across the state of Mississippi would benefit from an increase of educator training about dyslexia and the scientifically-proven teaching strategies, whereas parents and educators of students with dyslexia who struggle to overcome dyslexia across Mississippi and the nation have come together to advocate for reform to support their children. Therefore, on behalf of the City of Tupelo, as Mayor of the City of Tupelo, do hereby proclaim October as Dyslexia Awareness Month in the City of Tupelo, Mississippi. Thank you, Mia.
My name's Elizabeth Arnold. I am a dyslexic person, and I am a dyslexic person with a dyslexic daughter. There are one in five of us. Twenty percent of our population is dyslexic. And what that means is we think differently, we look at the world differently, we also need different education, we need multisensory education. Just looking at the written word and using both sides of our brain takes us a little bit longer, up to five times longer, to learn the same material. So when you look at your classroom, or you look around in our auditorium, twenty percent of us are dyslexic, and it's just so very important to understand, we all think a little bit differently, we use our brains a little bit differently, and we learn, and we need to be taught differently in our school systems. Thank you for your time.
Item 4.5, the Mayor's Report.
Thank you, President Bryan. At this time, just recap a few things. We recently, several councilmembers, myself attended the Mississippi Municipal League Small Town Conference in Natches, Mississippi, a very learning experience. And one thing I wanted to particularly mention, several of us, including Councilwoman Davis and Councilman Mike Bryan and myself, were able to tour the transportation facility and operations there in Natches. Very learning experience to see how they do both a combination of local and regional transportation there, and I think Ms. Davis, Councilwoman Davis, has reached out to some of the statewide coordinators there to get some more, I don't know if you'd say information sessions, but to get some more discussions started here in the city of Tupelo pertaining to that matter. We have a very big weekend in Tupelo this weekend. We have Thursday night, the Oktoberfest here in the city of Tupelo, that has been moved to the Tupelo Farmers Market instead of Fair Park due to a threat of weather and some other logistics concerns. So, the same great event, and the same, I don't know if you'd say silliness, but the same games and concepts, I'll just be there at the Farmers Market. The Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Walk is this Saturday beginning here at Fair Park. Thousands of people will be participating in that right here in downtown Tupelo. The City of Tupelo Softball Tournament Fund Day, United Way fundraiser, will begin at 9:00 a.m. this Saturday, October 22nd, at Manziel Field on Veterans Boulevard. That, Lindsey, and everybody downstairs has been working very hard on this. It's just one more way to show our commitment to the United Way and try to raise money. We are, I believe, number seven on the seventh top fundraiser for the United Way Northeast Mississippi Chapter, so this is one more thing that we're doing to help the United We had a special 71st anniversary this past Monday in the city of Tupelo. It was not the birth of our favorite Water and Light Director Johnny Timmons, but it was the 71st anniversary of Johnny's Drive-In, the oldest restaurant in the city of Tupelo. So, congratulations to Johnny's on 71 great years. Did want to mention Tupelo High School Football. They are off to a fantastic 8-0 start. They beat South Pinola this past week, tight game, three to nothing, but a rare thing to do. Even if South Pinola's not having their best year, it's still very rare to beat them. Tupelo beat them again to start 8-0, and hopefully will continue the winning ways and get back to the playoffs and hopefully bring home another state title. I did want to, just because I know we've got some Ole Miss fans on the City Council, but my fellow Mississippi State fans I thought would appreciate, just for purposes of I wanted included in the minutes of the City of Tupelo, wanted to mention that Mississippi State's Dak Prescott broke Tom Brady's all-time record to start a career with no interceptions, and hopefully that'll be in the minutes for all time, City of Tupelo. With that, we conclude the Mayor's Report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, at this time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda. Item 5, the public agenda. Item 5.1, Citizens Hearing, item 5.1A, in regard to a business location and residential Mr. Burrell, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Don Burrell. I live at 1212 Eugene Street. Really just wanted to make a statement that I have a business moving into me, into my next door, and I wanted to retain my privacy from that business. I would like to, and really that, I don't, I'm not opposing the business whatsoever. I do want to just make a statement that I want to retain my privacy at my residence, and that's really about, that's about really all that I've got to say. Just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell. All right, at this time, we close the public agenda and return to the regular session. There's no action, no items on the action agenda, so we'll move to the routine agenda. Item 7.1, review and approve minutes of regular City Council meeting of Tuesday, October the 4th, 2016. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Markel Whittington. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.2, review and approve, reject advertising and promotion expenses.
Make a motion, we approve.
A second motion.
I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Nettie Davis. On, just say, Mayor, what is this? We have one item on the promotion, and that was an advertisement in the Daily Journal for $100 for a homecoming ad.
Yes, sir.
For THS Homecoming?
Right.
Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor? And the motion carries. Item 7.3, review and pay the bills. And tonight, the bills were paid by Buddy Palmer, Markel Whittington, Mike.
Travis Beard.
Travis Beard. Is that it?
Does whether I make a motion that we pay bills?
Second.
We have a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Buddy Palmer. All in favor? The bills are paid. Item 7.4, review and ratify contract for sale of real estate at 814 Ryle Drive.
I move that we ratify this contract for sale of real estate at 814 Ryle Drive.
Second.
I have a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Mike Bryan. Mr. Logan.
We had previously authorized the Mayor to enter into this contract and consummate the sale for the old fire station location on Ryle Drive, just right off of Lake Shaw, and this is a contract for sale, and just need to ratify that so we put that money back.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.5, review and ratify a contract for sale of real estate at 320 Court Street.
I move that we would review and ratify the contract for sale of real estate at 320 Court Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Travis Beard. Mr. Logan.
This is the Water and Light Collections Building, same thing, we had previously authorized the Mayor, and that contract has been entered into and needs ratification.
All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.6, review and approve a list of special police detail.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we view and approve the list of special police detail.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Jennings and a second by Mr. Whittington. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. This is a fairly routine request by the Police Department. This is a request that approximately 40 or so officers that are listed in your packet be authorized to wear their uniform and carry their service weapon and other city-issued equipment to help with security and other matters at Bancorp South Arena for concerts or events or different things going on there. The liability, insurance, and fees and expenses come out of the arena's budget for these patrols.
Good. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, item 7.7, review, award, reject bid for Ramada Inn asbestos abatement project. And this item is, was put on the table, I'm not tied with the floor, so our legal counsel can look at it.
Make a motion, we take it off the table.
Second. I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer to remove this item from the table. All in favor? This item has been removed off the table.
Make a motion, we award the contract.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Nettie Davis to award the contract.
Actually, the bid.
I mean, the bid. Actually, Ms. Logan, could you explain this, because it kind of got convoluted and some stuff like that in the process?
The, we received four packets to be opened. One packet, the was the apparent low bidder at $167,700, $167,700. However, they did not comply with all of the bid offer, and they were unqualified, they did not provide a bid bond, and we had asked for that to be provided. Consequently, the lowest bid is at $209,605, Gulf Services Contracting Incorporated, Out of Mobile, Illinois.
Good. Do we have any more questions or discussion?
I'm just happy we're moving forward with this because it's been a kind of a ISO in our community, and it's in my ward, so I'm happy that we finally made the decision to move forward with this so that we can come up with something that's more attractive in that area.
Yes, Mayor. All right, all in favor? The bid is approved. Item 7.8, review and accept minutes of the Tupelo Major Thoroughfare Meeting of August the 8th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.9, review and accept minutes of a planning committee meeting of October the 3rd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mike Bryan and a second by Markel Whittington. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.10, review and accept minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission meeting of July and August of 2016.
I move that we would accept the Historic Preservation Commission minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Nettie Davis and a second by Willie Jennings. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.11, review and approve nomination to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I move that we approve this nomination to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Buddy Palmer and a second by Nettie Davis. Mayor?
Thank you, President Bryan. This, as stated yesterday at the pre-council, is a nomination or a submission for approval to the council by the Mayor's Office, but the Historic Preservation Commission, slightly different in that, like previous members, this is a request from the commission itself. They have previously voted to recommend Michellee Johnston for this. She has a phenomenal resume for my Ole Miss friends. She is a graduate of the University of Mississippi, but she would ask the council to take a look at her resume. She has a phenomenal resume and I think would make a great addition to this board for the City of Tupelo, and would respectfully request confirmation of her nomination at this time.
Is she here tonight? She's not here.
I think so.
All right, do we have any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.12, review and approve a request for donation of leave to a Water and Light Department employee. Mayor?
Make a motion, we approve.
A second, Markel Whittington, and a second by Mike Bryan. Mayor?
Thank you. This is a routine, see it more often, probably with police and fire department, but other departments as well, they have a employee who's undergoing a significant illness, and the request is that other employees be allowed to donate vacation and sick time to that employee.
Good, thank you. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.13, review or reject bids for rebuild of a digger derrick truck for the Water and Light Department.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Willie Jennings and a second by Buddy Palmer. Mayor?
The, and I apologize, I was reading, the request on this is that the bid be rejected in four years. I've still not determined exactly what a digger derrick truck is, but the bids did not come in budget on this one, and Mr. Timmons, on behalf of the Water and Light Department, has requested that this bid be rejected, and we rebid as soon as possible.
Okay, so the motion is that we reject the bid to rebuild this digger derrick truck for the Water and Light.
I made a motion that we reject this bid.
Okay. So, we amend the motion, it's a rejection of the bid.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, rejecting the bid? The motion carries. All right, item 7.14, review or award or reject bid for state revolving fund FY14 Sewer System Improvements Area 5B for the Water and Light Department. Mayor?
Make a motion, we award the bid.
Second.
Markel Whittington made the motion, and Mike Bryan seconded it. Mayor?
Thank you. This, and Mr. Timmons is here for need further explanation, but this is a, the ongoing from the annexation, this is a continuation of that project. This is, I believe, in the Chesterfield Ballfield area. The bid information, the lowest and best qualified bid to Argo Construction is recommended by our engineers and would request that the bid be approved at this time.
Good. Any more?
Mr. President, with, I guess it was discussed yesterday, this $2.1 million, $919,000, would that come out of the $21 million?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but yeah, it's out of the same, I apologize for that.
And I think this is pretty much getting down to the end of it, too, is it not?
It's getting close.
Yeah, we're getting close to having completed all of this. All right, any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.15, review, award, and reject bids for Water and Light Department.
Make a motion that we award the bids.
Second.
I have a motion by Markel Whittington and a second by Buddy Palmer. Mayor?
Thank you. This is in the packet there. You can, and I may need Mr. Timmons to help me on this one, if you don't mind, Mr. Timmons.
This year, we budgeted for a new backhoe for the Water and Sewer Department. As you can see in the minutes here, I've got items that didn't meet specification to the low bidder, so we went to the next bidder, which was Caterpillar, and I recommend Caterpillar to you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.16, review and approve transfer of unclaimed water and light deposits to the state treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard and a second by Buddy Palmer. Mayor?
Thank you. This is just a routine budgeting. This is just a routine budgeting, accounting action that we have to take. These are, it's required under the Unclaimed Property Act. These are people that have paid some type of deposit or over, overage on their bill, or for whatever reason, there's, there's money that does not belong to the city or the Water and Light Department. Those funds have to be transferred to the state treasurer, who will then do the publications that you sometimes see in the newspaper of how to go about claiming property, if you see your name. But just by the nature of that law and the Water and Light Department, we have to transfer that money to the state. If we did not, it's my understanding, we'd have to pay interest on those funds.
Okay.
So if it's not collecting a limit of time, we couldn't get it back?
I think, uh...
No point in time.
I think the, the state...
I'm not saying it's accurate, because I know that, that a lot of people probably would never claim that money.
I, I think, and Ms. Hannah is here, I think it just goes into an account for the state, and I'm sure they get interest or something off of it, but I don't even, I think it just has to remain in an account for at least some period of time, just in case somebody ever comes along and says, hey, y'all owe me my deposit back.
They was following that, for some, whatever reason, nobody claimed here in Tupelo.
Right. But we don't, I, I understand, but no, we, it's, we talked to Jackson.
Can't believe nobody claiming that money.
You're gonna get me in trouble. Headline of paper tomorrow, talking about the state treasurer.
Didn't see my name on anything, dude. I checked you out. I want to make sure. A lot of my...
May have been somebody moved away or whatever.
Is there any more discussion? The motion, uh, all in favor? The motion carries. Item 7.17, review and, or review and accept a donation from the Neighborhood Development Corporation of 350 Frisco Avenue.
I move that we would accept a donation from Neighborhood Development Corporation.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Davis and a second by Mr. Beard. Mayor.
Thank you, President Brian. This is part of the same, we had just purchased some property not, not too long ago, trying to get the land suitable for 11, 11 to 15, 22 homes. So, that is what this is, this is being transferred from Frisco, I mean, from NDC to the city of Tupelo, to try to get those 22 homes built.
Good. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? The motion carries. All right. Now this one, there's four separate bids, and I think that, Mr. Logan, you want us to do them as separate bids? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, on your agenda, it's only written as item 7.8, but I will call the bid out. You do have the backup for that bid in your packet. Item 7.8, 7.18A, review, accept or reject a bid for a rubber tire excavator for Public Works, bid number 1432PW. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I move we accept the 1432PW rubber tire excavator bid.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Beard and a second by Mr. Whittington. Mayor.
If I could defer to Ms. Hannah on this, this is part of the, you know, we, this was damaged by the tornado, went through the FEMA process, so you've got FEMA money, sale money, insurance money. Let me, let her...
I will give you a quick overview of the project. The old fire station that we were using as a storage facility was damaged in the tornado. We actually applied to FEMA and received an obligation for that project, but since we weren't rebuilding that storage facility back, we applied for an alternate project. We were awarded about $600,000 for this project, which we applied this summer, once we were awarded the alternate project, we applied this summer for specific pieces of equipment that were used in the tornado cleanup and were practically used up. So we need to replace these pieces of equipment. This is a good alternative project to replace our equipment that was used, and this was awarded, and now we're going through the proper procurement, and then we will, we will file this very quickly upon your approval, and we'll get started on the ordering. And if you have any specific questions about the equipment, Chuck is here.
So, the first item that we're gonna buy as part of this was the item 1432PW, which is a rubber tire excavator. All in favor of awarding the bid?
I got one first.
I'm sorry.
We only, now, I apologize for not being there today. We only do 25% of this. Rest of content, famous.
That is correct. We do have a 20...
All of them be the same on that part.
That is correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. All in favor of...
Mr. President, point of information, this is the best bid, as two of the bids didn't meet specs. Is that correct, Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of them, I think, didn't have a piece of equipment on it, and the other did not, the swing speed was out, was different. Okay.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the bid? The bid's accepted. All right. Do I have a motion to accept Public Works bid 1433PW for a general freight regional haul truck with a decal?
I move to approve 1433PW.
I have a motion by Mr. Bryan and a second by Ms. Davis. Actually, this is just a, a truck tractor that they'll be using to haul a dump trailer or flatbed trailer or whatever in Public Works. Any discussion on this purchase?
And by the way, I think council would, would agree to this. That's still, that's the best bid on each...
Lowest and best.
Okay. This is the lowest and best bid. All in favor? The bid is awarded. Item, I lost my place, 134...
1434.
7.18C, which is Public Works bid 1434PW for a construction dump truck.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Whittington.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Buddy Palmer. And, I mean, I'm sorry, but Mr. Willie Jennings, I'm starting to act like Mr. Palmer. The, this is for a construction dump truck, and we are accepting the lowest and best bid. Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
They'll all be lowest and best, but they have, it doesn't necessarily have to be the lowest, it has to be the best.
Understood. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? The bid is approved. And then the last item, 7.18C, is Public Works bid 1435PW for a construction dump truck with a shuttle bed.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Mike Bryan and a second by Ms. Nettie Davis. And we are again accepting the lowest, yeah, the lowest and best bid from Summit Truck Group. All in favor? The bid's accepted. All right. So Chuck's got some new toys. All right. The study agenda, item 8.1, review, discuss amendment to Code of Ordinance regarding mowing of private properties determined to be a minister of public health and safety and welfare.
Move it up.
Move it up.
Okay. That item will be moved up. Item nine, executive session. Mr. Logan, do we need to determine the need for executive session?
Yes, we have a personnel matter.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter?
Have a motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Davis, a second by Mr. Buddy Palmer. All in favor? The city council's now in executive session.